Barb, would you take the roll call, please?
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?.
Yes.
And Nadavich?
Nadavich is here.
Davis?
Here.
Blake?
Here.
Vaughn?
Vaughn is here.
All council members are here except for the vacancy in Ward Six. Okay, um. Disposal of the minutes for the regular council meeting for the city of Garfield Heights on Monday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one, I'd like to make a motion to accept as read. Do I have a second?
I'll second it. Chuck Dunhu.
Okay. Thank you, Chuck. Barb, would you take a roll call, please?
And Nadavich?
Nadavich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Are accepted at a six to zero vote. Thank you very much. Next, we have written communications to council. Barb, is there any written communication to council?
Uh, yes, we received one email from Carol Schillerow.
At this point, after speaking with Carol during the break, we're there. Uh, please go ahead and read the communication, please.
The entire communication?
Um, how long are we talking? Read the whole thing. Read the whole thing.
Click on. Two whole pages. Okay. Dear esteemed council members, as a thirty-two-year resident and homeowner in Garfield Heights, I respectfully request that an amendment be made to ordinance five oh five point one three that would allow homeowners to raise backyard chickens. As you know, many of our surrounding cities have permitted backyard coops or chickens for several years now and has been a great benefit to their communities. Some of those cities are Independence, Valley View, Macedonia, Sagamore Hills, Lakewood, Cleveland, and most recently, North Olsted. Chickens have been animal companions of humans for thousands of years.
Here we gotta find out who's doing that and mute them.
Doing my best.
Okay.
Good, Barb.
Thanks a lot. Chickens have been animal companions of humans for thousands of years. They provide outstanding pest control, eating ticks, slugs, mosquitoes, and many other insects. And they produce eggs that are much more nutritious than those you can buy at the supermarket. Keeping backyard chickens is more than just a trend. They are beneficial to the families and communities that allow them. Backyard chickens are beneficial to the community that they live in because they, one, offer fresh locally sourced eggs and can be organic and non-GMO. Two, can help to provide food security for lower income families. Three, produce healthier eggs compared to store bought eggs. Four, provide gardeners with high-molyte fertilizer. Five, help control flies and other pests. Six, dispose of weeds and kitchen scraps that would otherwise go to the landfill. Seven, chickens have been seen as therapeutic for children on the autism spectrum by getting the kids involved in feeding and caring for the chickens, thereby promoting independent living skills. Eight, chickens provide a great way for kids to learn about nature, agriculture, and the responsibility of caring for animals. Raising chickens is also a fantastic way for both kids and adults to gain respect for these intelligent creatures that produce food for us. Backyard chickens will generally get far more humane care than those raised in filthy crowded factory farms. Industrial production is creating numerous problems, including pollution from manure, antibiotic resistance, and higher risk of a more dangerous strain of bird flu. Keeping a few chickens at home is one way we can each do our part to address these problems, limit their numbers, and require clean humane care, absolutely. But there really is no legitimate reason for any city to prohibit keeping a few chickens any more than there is reason to ban the keeping of dogs or cats. Some common misconceptions about backyard chickens include, one, they're noisy. Chickens will peep and cluck softly throughout the day and are silent all night. Two, they smell. A small flock of five or six chickens will poop about as much as an average dog, and the coop will not smell if it's kept clean. Three, they attract predators. This is not truly a misconception, but can easily be remedied by the chicken owner. Chickens aren't only food for humans, they can be food for a number of predators as well. It is the responsibility of the chicken owner to keep his or her chickens contained and safe from predators, just as the same responsibility falls on cat and dog owners. Four, you need a rooster for hens to lay eggs. This is simply untrue. The only reason a rooster would be needed in a flock of hens would be for reproduction. Hens will still lay eggs without a rooster present. What we are asking is for a change in the ordinance against owning backyard chickens in the city of Garfield Heights and adopting a new ordinance that allows responsible citizens in residentially zoned areas to own a small backyard flock. Thank you in advance for your kind consideration of our request. Respectfully, Carol Schillerow and family, five four seven five, East one hundred and thirty-fifth Street, Garfield Heights. That's all.
Barb, I want you to forward me a, give me a copy of that letter, please.
Oh, yes, I know.
Thank you. And send it to all of council, please.
All of council has, has, Mr. Chairman, if I could, if I could have the floor for one second.
Mr. Blake, go ahead.
Um, Ms. Schillerow had previously reached out to me, and we had some messages back and forth. Uh, I had given, discussed two options with her, waiting until the Ward Six council person got seated or reaching out to council as I cannot speak for all of you. So that's what she did. We did receive the email earlier this morning. I did forward it to Barb Moline as well. Not sure this is the time to do it, but regards to Mrs. Schillerow's, I know she wants to speak and address council at a later in comments by citizens, but I would like to place this item in legislative committee to discuss further.
I'd like to second that.
Okay, on the motion by Mr. Blake and seconded by Mr. Vaughn to place this item in legislative committee. Barb, would you take a roll call, please?
Blake? Blake?
Yeah. Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
And Nadavich?
Nadavich votes yes.
Davis?
For our vote, I would also like to concur that I did receive the correspondence from Mrs. Schillerow uh, on Sunday. I believe as a matter of fact, unfortunately, I had not responded back because I'm not feeling well. I did receive that. I vote yes.
Thank you. That's everyone.
Okay, that's six votes placed in legislative committee. Uh, I will make that note right now. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Blake, Mr. Vaughn. Is there any other communications to council, Barbara?
No, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Is there any legislation coming out of committee that I know of? Uh, the only legislation we have is the vote, and we'll be, we'll be performing that, um, legislation tonight at just before, uh, comments by citizens. Oh, okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Who am I talking to?
Mr. Vaughn.
Tom, go ahead.
Uh, I would like to make a motion at tonight's meeting after comments by citizens before miscellaneous business that we go ahead with the vote for the replacement of the Ward Six council member.
Mr. Vaughn, uh, do I have a second on that motion?
I'll second it. Thank you. I was muted.
Seconded in council. Do I have, um, Barb, take a vote on the motion where it's taking place?
I, who seconded it? I heard three voices.
Mr. Dudley.
Thank you.
Mr. Dunhu, Mr. Dunhu.
Mr. Dunhu, thank you. Okay. Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
And Nadavich?
Nadavich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
That passes six to nothing. Um, slight adjustment to that. I would also like to make a motion right now to place the, um, appointment of a Ward Six council person on the agenda for tonight. Go ahead and second.
Second. I'll second it.
Barb, would you take a roll call, please?
Who seconded it, please?
Like?
Myself or Chuck? Either one.
I can't see anybody. I can't see you.
Okay, Chuck Dunhu.
Thank you. I need names. All right. Okay, here we go. And Nadavich?
Nadavich votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
For our vote, I'm confused. Isn't that what we just did? Because that's the motion I made.
You made a motion and put it on the words where it takes place at. It was supposed to.
No, I also put it on the agenda, Mike.
I did not hear that.
Yeah.
I didn't hear it.
Okay, all right. I vote yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Thank you, Barb. That's six votes to zero. Okay. Okay, if there's nothing else, we're gonna, uh, report of the mayor. Matt, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I do have a, a report this evening. It's been a pretty busy, about three weeks now. I believe that I've been in this office, and I have some really good news to share with you, um, tonight. First of all, I wanna kinda go back to, uh, Mr. Primus and his water leak, um, over there in Ward One. Uh, I'm happy to announce that his water leak has been fixed. The, uh, Cleveland Water Department went out there, they assessed the situation, I believe, um. His line was also fixed, and, uh, everybody should be happy over there. I would definitely like to thank, uh, Janice Tubbs for getting involved in that, along with, uh, our, uh, service director, Mark Saikon, and his, uh, his team over there for, uh, putting salt down on the road, making sure that we're safe in that area. There wasn't any ice forming. Um, and then also, uh, lastly, I would like to thank, uh, to thank, uh, the reporter, CNN New Yorker, for her efforts, because had it not been for her report, I would not have known what was going on there. While I have, uh, Mr. Saikon on there, I wanna also say, um, Mr. Saikon, thank you so much for, uh, your guys out there plowing the snow in this last snowstorm. I can't tell you the amount of phone calls that I got from residents thanking me, and, uh, as if I was driving the trucks, I'll tell you, your guys did a great job, and, um, they need to be commended for it. Um, and I know they enjoyed the pizza I got for them, and I, I don't dare say that in front of everybody, because then the rec department's gonna want pizza and the firefighters and so on and so forth, but those guys went over and above, and they deserved it. I'm very excited to report to you today that, um, I swore in three new police officers this, uh, this afternoon. The, uh, three new officers are a very diverse group. Um, I'm proud to see them, proud to see them coming on board here in Garfield Heights. Um, the only regret I have is that they could not be in front of council to, uh, get sworn in and take their oath. Um, is Chief K on the line?
I don't see him.
Um, just to let you know, I mean, I was gonna let Chief K talk about him. It, it really, um, I have to say, I have to applaud the chief because he not only went out and looked for, uh, the three officers, but he found three very diverse police officers. Um, Officer Yusef Yehiri is a Muslim officer, very well, uh, respected. He came to us through lateral transfer. He is, uh, about twenty-eight years old, looks like a very strong young man, looks like he'll round out our police op, uh, police force really well. Officer Tywin Turner, resident of Garfield Heights here in, um, in, uh, I believe Ward One. He lives on East one hundred and thirty-fifth. And, um, he was very happy to come here to Garfield Heights and, and actually patrol in his own hometown here. So I really got a chance to, to meet him and his, and his, uh, lovely, uh, little boy, um, and, uh, and also his family. And then, uh, Officer Peters.
Mayor Chief K is on the line. I'm sorry. I think we had some technical difficulties.
Hey, chief, if you're on the line, you wanna tell, tell everybody a little bit about these three officers that we swore in today?
Yeah, absolutely. So our first one, Peter Stockhausen, he's a five-year veteran of the, uh, Shaker Heights Police Department, which if anybody knows, they're a very squared away department, so we were lucky to get him. Uh, Yusef, he was, he's with the, um, uh, Case Western Reserve Police Department for three years. He actually came over from Morocco in two thousand and twelve, so he's got a pretty interesting background, really nice guy. And then Taiwan's been with the Cleveland Police Department for two years, also a great officer. I mean, can imagine working in Cleveland, he's seen his share and done his share of things, so, um, you know, our policy is the minimum we train is eight weeks. So with these laterals with their experience, you know, in eight weeks, we're gonna be able to get them on the road.
All right, thanks, chief. Um, chief, while I got you on the line, I, um, we also brought on two, uh, part-time safety dispatchers, correct?
That's correct. We have, uh, two part-timers, one's from Mentor, um, and the other one was from Chagrin Valley. What happened is our records clerk is gonna be retiring in April, so one of our full-time dispatchers is moving over into a record spot. And one of our part-time dispatches is going full-time, and we were able to find two really qualified part-timers to fill her spot.
Excellent. And then I also wanna talk a little bit about the parking ban that was out, um, during the snowstorm. I know I had some phone calls about that parking ban, and I did speak with the chief. Chief, how many cars did we, did we end up, uh, ticketing, and have we towed any?
Yeah, so for that, it was about twenty-four hours the parking ban was in effect. Um, we ticketed at least fifty-five tickets came across my desk, and there's probably a few that didn't, that just went straight up the court. So at least fifty-five cars were ticketed. A handful were towed, and we gave at least that many warnings. Um, our officers were great. They were out there, and, you know, if a car was clearly parked overnight, buried in snow, um, it got a citation. However, if it looked like it had just parked there, somebody's cleaning off the driveway, our officers would go knock on the doors, they were making phone calls to residents, asking them to come move their car before they, they got cited. Um, they did one heck of a job. I think everybody has to realize when the bad weather comes in, our calls go up. So these guys were running all day, um, accidents, disabled, you know, um, spun out cars. Um, they're missing their meals, they're missing their brakes, they got wet shoes, wet clothes the whole day. They really stepped up. I was real proud of them that day.
Thanks, chief. Um, moving right along, because I, I don't wanna be as long as I was last time. I got some criticism for my first council meeting as a mayor. I was pretty long-winded, I guess. The Community Relations Committee, I wanna touch on that for a second. Currently, there's, uh, five applicants, and of the five, I think two or three of them didn't, did not leave a phone number, so I'm waiting for them to get back to us via the email that they left, and hopefully they'll get back to us. I can start the process of interviewing possibly next week. If we don't have enough candidates to make it a diverse group like we were talking about on council, we're, we're gonna have to maybe delay the, uh, the deadline and wait for some more applicants to apply. But, uh, at any rate, I'll keep you guys posted on that. I have some very, very exciting news, um, something that I've been working on for the last twenty-two days and probably then some. Um, as you know, uh, we've got this huge island park center over there, um, right as you come into Garfield Heights off of Transportation Boulevard, uh, owned by ICP. And, uh, had numerous conversations with ICP, uh, even before I took office. And, um, they have told me that there's two large companies that they've been dealing with that want to come to their space, and we've been doing whatever we can to try to land them. Well, I got confirmation at about twelve oh five P M. today that one of those two has signed their commitment to Garfield Heights. And, uh, I don't know which one they are. I wish I knew exactly which one of the two. I could tell you, they're both about the same. Um, they, they, the one has a three million dollar payroll, that's gonna grow to a five million dollar payroll within the next five years. They're, they want sixty thousand square feet of, um, warehouse space or, or space right there. I assume it's a Walmart building only because last week I had to get involved with ICP and members of, um, NEO Gas Company. I reached out to the president of the gas company and just asked him why we're having so much of a hard time getting that line, the meter, put in to get the gas on over at, at, uh, the Walmart building. So I assume that's where this company's going. If it's the company that I think it is, they are going to make their world headquarters right here in Garfield Heights. So that's certainly some really good news. I have to really commend everybody in this administration. I think everybody from Tim Riley, Jeff Jerome, Noreen Kuban, Barb Byrow, Mark Morrow, they've all been on these calls and on the, on the Zoom calls and these meetings with ICP, with the, the two companies involved. And, um, as soon as I find out which company it is, I, I probably won't find out till tomorrow or Wednesday, because the owner of ICP called me directly, and he's on vacation. So he called me just to let me know it's pretty much a go. And, uh, as soon as I find out how many jobs are being created and exactly what the payroll amount is, I will definitely report to council president, let him know. So with that, I have to get into tonight's legislation. Um, ordinance number seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one. Um, the salary of the mayor. Um, this is something that I believe was brought on when, uh, when I took office. Uh, they realized that the ordinance nineteen, two thousand and nine has not been updated. Um, so just to let everybody know, it's a formality. Council probably should have been doing it all along every four years. The, just, and to, to rest assured, the pay of the mayor is not changing. It's the same as it was in two thousand and nine and all these years. So it, it has not, it's not affecting the pay, but it's affecting the dates of the term of mayor. So that is, is, uh, seventeen, two thousand and twenty-one. Eighteen, two thousand and twenty-one, uh, is a purchase of a Silverado twenty-five-hundred four-by-four vehicle for the, uh, fire department, and they're gonna use that to plow around their facilities. Um, I believe their, um, their plow truck is in pretty bad shape and is in dire need. Ordinance nineteen, two thousand and twenty-one has to do with the, uh, with Meritech and the, um, equipment here at the offices. Um, we lease this equipment, we're just renewing it, and it looks to me like we're saving about ten bucks on it, um, for the next year or so, the next sixty months. Ordinance number twenty, two thousand and twenty-one is, uh, a fire, a firefighter's grant. It's gonna allow us to buy five thousand smoke detectors to hand out, and also two L E D signs, one for each fire station. So, um, hopefully we can get that grant going. And, um, let's see, resolution nine, two thousand and twenty-one is just honoring Cleveland Clinic for one hundred, one hundred years, um, the Cleveland Clinic Foundation. I, I think that is something that is, uh, incredible. Not too many organizations last that long. And then last but not least, resolution number ten, two thousand and twenty-one is a resolution just making it clear that we would like to have enough COVID vaccines available for our law enforcement and for our safety forces. So, um, with that, you have my report.
Mayor's report. Are there any questions for the mayor?
Chairman?
Congresswoman Davis?
Mayor Burke, you mentioned, um, the legislation for the fire department and the smoke detectors. I remember last year, right before COVID hit, um, we were talking about a program to pass those out. Is this the same thing that is the third? I guess I probably should be asking Chief Stroke that question, actually.
Um, I don't know if the chief's on, on the call, but, uh, it's a, it's a FEMA grant. But, Stroke, are you on the, on the call?
Yeah, I am. I can take that, mayor, if you'd like.
Sure.
Um, it's a similar program. It's not, it's not run by the Red Cross. It'd be something we would be doing like we've done in the past. Um, it'd be just a stash of smoke detectors until the Red Cross can start doing theirs. We are out of the six thousand we bought a few years ago, and it would replace those and continue them like we have been.
Okay, thank you, chief.
Are there any other questions for the mayor? On his report? Okay, they're being done. Uh, we will go to comments by citizens. Wait, excuse me. Are there any directors that have a report tonight? Are there any directors that have a report tonight? Okay, thank you. Okay, we will go on to comments by citizens on tonight's agenda. Barb, would you read the rules, please?
Comments will be strictly limited to brief statements, not to exceed five minutes, with comments limited to legislation on the current evening's agenda. No citizen shall speak more than once.
Anyone that wishes to speak on tonight's legislation? Is there anyone wishing to speak on tonight's legislation and resolutions?
There are. Ms. Lanine Jones has her hand up.
Okay, let's see. Uh, I don't see Mrs. Jones here.
I'm here.
Okay, where is Mrs. Jones? Mrs. Jones, go ahead.
Hi. Um, I just had a question about the mayor's salary. Um, he mentioned that the salary has been this way since two thousand and ninety-eighty-five. Is it eighty-five thousand dollars, correct? And, okay, um, because for some reason I was under the impression it was more than that. Uh, where, where do I find salaries for Garfield Heights, uh, government employees? Is it online? Because I, I work for the government, and my salary can be viewed by just going online to find that information. Is that the same for Garfield Heights?
I will refer that question to Barb Bureau. She's on the line.
Okay, thank you.
Um, Barb is sitting right next to me here, and she said that, Ms. Jones, if you want to make a public record request, she can, uh, definitely get that to you.
Oh, okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything else, Ms. Jones?
No, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you very much.
This, Mr. Chairman, Ms. Schillerow has her hand up.
Okay. Ms. Schillerow, go ahead. I'm here, Carol.
I'm working on it. Hello, um, first of all, I just wanna thank Mr. Blake and Mr. Vaughn for their respectful communication with me over the last few days. I really appreciated that. And, um, it just, you know, it, it encourages me. So I do ask that each council person take time and review the letter that I sent, um, because it does have good information in it. I also have done a ton of research regarding backyard hens. Um, Lakewood, for instance, is a city, and Cleveland is a city. They both allow backyard hens. I know a lot. I know a lot of the concerns are our yards are small, blah, blah, blah. We actually have an acre in our yard. And we actually have larger lots than Lakewood and the Cleveland area on average, the median lots. So instead of just saying, no, we've discussed this before, I don't wanna discuss it again and shutting me down. I felt so disrespected, I have to say that, when I first, you know, brought it up. I would like an opportunity to speak either privately or publicly with the council people to discuss what would be, in your eyes, the red flags. Let's talk through them. Let's gather a group that are interested in this to talk as residents. I think we deserve that respect. I think we deserve the time.
Ms. Schillerow.
So I just ask that we would be able to do that.
Thank you, Ms. Schillerow. You will have a chance at the end of this meeting to go into this a little bit further. And I didn't mean any disrespect. I says we've gone through this three or four times and every time we've gone through it, it was always voted down for reasons. But now that it's in legislative committee, I will be the chair of that and I will listen to you very intently. I didn't mean any disrespect. I'm sorry you took it that way, but I seem to be rubbing a lot of people the wrong way tonight, so. Okay, if there's no more questions for the mayor or any directors' reports, we will move on to ordinances and resolutions. Okay, moving on to ordinances and resolutions. The first ordinance we come to is ordinance 17, 2021. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance 17 dash 2021, sponsored by Councilman Tom Vaughn, co-sponsored by Councilman Nanatovic, Dunhu, and Vaughn. An ordinance fixing the salary of the mayor of the city of Garfield Heights, Ohio.
Okay. I would like to make a motion at this time to, to consider by title. Do I have a second?
Second needed. Not needed.
We don't need a second.
Do I have a second?
You don't need a second.
Okay.
Nanatovic?
Yes, go ahead.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Tom Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
I know.
Yes.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman. I never did.
Go ahead.
I never did actually vote.
Go ahead, Councilman. Councilwoman.
I vote yes.
Miss Councilwoman Davis?
No, I checked out her name. Oh, well.
Who made the point of order? Councilwoman Davis, did you?
Yes, she did and she didn't get an opportunity to vote.
I asked Councilwoman Davis.
Mr. Chairman, yes. So the clerk did call my name, but I didn't get to respond and then she called Councilman Donahue's name and he voted.
Thank you.
That was my point in saying that. Thank you, Councilman Donahue. My vote is yes.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving right along on the suspension of the three reading rule. Barb, would you re, take the roll?
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
You're muted.
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Rever of Rule 24. Barb, will you take the roll, please?
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis? Ms. Davis?
Ms. Davis, you're muted. Ms. Davis, you're muted.
We can't hear you, Sheila.
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Barb, I did not hear Ms. Davis's response. How did she vote?
She's, she voted yes.
Voted yes?
Yes.
Okay, that's six yes votes. On the adoption, starting with myself.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake? Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
The adoption, it passes six votes, yes votes. Moving on now to ordinance 18, 2021. Barb, would you read the final?
Ordinance number 18 dash 2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Aper, co-sponsored by Councilman Nanatovic, Blake, Dunhu, and Vaughn. An ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor or his designate to purchase one 2021 Chevrolet Silverado 2500 four by four from Tim Lally Chevrolet Incorporated.
Thank you, Barbara. I'd like to make a motion to consider by title. Barb, take the roll.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
On the suspension of the three reading rule. Barb, would you take the roll call, starting with me?
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake? Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Thank you. On the waiver, that was a 24-hour or a three-reading rule? I just read Barb.
Three-reading rule.
That was the three-reading rule we just did.
Thank you very much. On the waiver of the 24-hour rule, starting with me, Barb.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
And on the adoption. Barb?
And Rich?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Barb, that passes six zero. Excuse me. Ordinance 19, 2021. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Ordinance number 19 dash 2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Aper, co-sponsored by Councilman Nanatovic, Dunhu, and Vaughn. An emergency ordinance authorizing the mayor or his designate to enter into a new agreement on behalf of the city of Garfield Heights with Meritech Incorporated for the purchase and maintenance of office equipment.
I make a motion to consider by title. Barb, would you take the roll call, starting with me?
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley? Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
The ordinance 19, 2021 passes six yes votes.
No. No, not yet, Chairman.
Did I vote on Rule 24 that time?
No, that we just considered by title.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The three readings.
I'm sorry. I'm waiting for somebody to jump in periodically right now, so. Well, I'm, I'm playing the game the wrong way. After considering by title, that's six to nothing. I'd like to suspend the three-reading rule. Barb, take a motion, please. I mean, a roll call.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes, yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
That's six zero votes on suspension. Waiver of the Rule 24. Barb, would you take a roll call?
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
And on the adoption of ordinance 19, 2021, starting with myself. Barb, take a roll.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
That passes six to nothing. We go to resident ordinance 20, no, 21, 20, 2021. I'd like to make a motion to consider. Barb, would you read the title?
Ordinance number 20, 20, 20 dash 2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Aper, co-sponsored by Councilman Nanatovic, Blake, Dudley, Dunhu, and Vaughn. An emergency ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor or his designate to make application and enter into an agreement with the federal emergency management agencies, FY 2020 Assistance to Firefighters Grant, Fire Prevention and Safety Grant.
Excuse me again. I'd like to make a motion to consider by title. Barb, would you take the roll, please?
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Post zero on the suspension of the three-reading rule. Barb, would you take?
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Waiver of Rule 24. Barb, would you take the roll?
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Thank you. And on the adoption, starting with myself, Barb.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
That passes six to no, no, zero. Moving on to resolution 09, 2021. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Resolution number 09, 2021, sponsored by Mayor Matthew Burke, co-sponsored by Councilman Nanatovic, Blake, Dudley, Dunhu, and Vaughn. An emergency resolution honoring the 100th anniversary of the Cleveland Clinic Foundation.
Make a motion to consider by title, starting with myself. Barb, take the roll.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
Suspension of the three reading rule, starting with myself, Barb.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
And on its adoption, starting with myself.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. And on our last resolution for the evening, resolution 10, 2021. Barb, would you read the title, please?
Resolution number 10, 20 dash 2021, sponsored by Councilman Michael Nanatovic, co-sponsored by Councilman Vaughn, Blake, Dudley, and Dunhu. An emergency resolution urging Governor Dewine and the Ohio Department of Public Health to include law enforcement officers in tier one B regarding the distribution of COVID-19 vaccine and to increase the amount of vaccines sent to Clough County to accomplish this request.
Barbara, Barbara. I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a motion to consider by title. Barb, would you take the roll, please?
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic votes yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Suspension of the three reading rule, starting with myself.
Nanatovic?
Nanatovic, yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
And on the adoption, starting with myself.
Nanatovic?
Before I vote, I would like to say that I believe the first responders also include law enforcement because they're, they're usually before the ambulance gets there and they have to deal with this firsthand. They're the ones breaking up the fights, getting their mask ripped off, scratched, spit on and everything else and they should be among the very first to receive this right after the people that are working in the hospitals and I vote yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Before I vote, I just wanna say I too agree that these gentlemen and ladies need to get this right away. And I would also like to thank President of the FOP, Gary Walzki, for bringing this to our attention and hopefully the governor will move on it quickly. And with that, I vote yes.
Dudley?
Yes, before I vote, I'd like to concur with Councilman Vaughn and also Councilman Nanatovic. When you see them stop some people in vehicle, they walk into a vehicle and they talking and the people in the vehicles, I'd say, don't even have a mask on their face, you know? So they are really subject to possibly being affected with the COVID-19 and I think this is great and I vote yes.
Dunhu?
Yes.
That passes six to zero. Thus ending our ordinances and resolutions. Thus ending our ordinances and resolutions. Next, we will go to the, um, as Councilman Vaughn had stated in his uh, resol- um, 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 motion. We will now open the floor. Let me get this right. For the nominations. Excuse me. One second, ladies and gentlemen. We will now open up the floor to, um, nominations.
What an order. I believe Mr. Vaughn moved to have this after comments by citizens.
Did he move the after?
Am I correct, Mr. Vaughn?
Yes, you are, Mr. Riley.
Well, thank you very much for the correction, Mr. Riley. I appreciate it. Okay. Next, we will move on to comments by citizens. Barb, will you read the, uh, uh, roles?
Comments shall be restricted to any problem a citizen has, which has previously been submitted to his or her councilperson or to the City Hall Department directly involved. If submission of a problem to a City Hall Department or a councilperson is made and there's a lack of service rendered in this regard, the problem may then presented during comments from citizens at a future meeting. It is the intention of this rule that no request of a first nature is presented on the floor at this time. Comments shall be limited to five minutes. No citizens will be heard more than once.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Blake, I would appreciate it if you would run the hands up.
James Feeny has his hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Blake, bring him in.
Good evening, Council. Uh, my name is James Feeny. Uh, address is five, three, five, five, East one twenty-fourth Street. I want to just make a little mention that I know these are meetings are done by way of Zoom. But as a resident sitting here watching these meetings, I find it kind of an insult that you see council people putting up profile pictures, not sitting live. Uh, you do see the mayors once in a while having side conversations. Um, all this should never be happening because if you were in person, you wouldn't be allowed to do this in person. So I would like to ask that all council people put up real pictures, live vote, you know, live video instead of a profile picture. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feeny. Mr. Blake?
Mr. Chairman, Ms. Schillerow has her hand up.
Go ahead, Mr. Ms. Carol. You have the floor.
Okay, thank you. Um. I guess I would like to ask a question of all of you. What are the reasons that you decided not to allow backyard hens in the past? Because if I just start talking, I could be hitting on a lot of things that really would just take up too much time. So do you mind if I would ask you what are the reasons that helped Garfield Heights City from back from allowing backyard hens?
If I may, Council, I would like to address that. Oh, in the past meetings that we've had with this Carol, can I call you Carol?
Absolutely.
The past meetings that we've had. The city, the residents that did speak out against the, um, backyard foul. Said it starts with foul. Then we hear roosters crowing. Then we hear goats batting, and then we hear pigs, and it has gotten to the point where in Mr. Vaughn's ward, we had one woman that wanted to raise barnyard animals. Small pigs, small chickens, goats, sheep. If we allow one, what's to say that we're not taking the court to allow more? And that's the line of thinking I believe we took on. There are other cities that do allow this. But first, Garfield Heights was one of the ones that put it in their legislation that we can't have this. Uh, as you know, we will be going into a legislative meeting, which I will call in the next couple of weeks. You will be informed. Uh, we can go into very detailed discussion, and we could even bring in the legislation from the past meeting for you to, uh, to look over and see. And if I can, I will get that legislation to you prior to the meeting. So you know what we went to before. And that way gives you a little hindsight, so we don't have repetitive questions. Plus, you could do a little research on what we found there. But, uh, it's going to be looked at in a legislative meeting, and those were some of the reasons that people did not want it. The main one was the rooster crowing. I don't want to be woke up at six o'clock every morning. You know, or I don't want to be smelling the manure. Now, you know, if we don't limit the amount of chickens, it will be piled up, and then somebody will say, hey, let's make a compost pile. Now you got a compost pile with manure in it rather than being disposed of. These are the things we're running across. That's what we ran into. Go ahead.
Uh, yeah, I'd love to respond to that because those are concerns that other cities have had as well. And they have overcome those due to the way the ordinances ordinances were written. So I would love to bring in ordinances from other cities so that we could review that together. And we could look at what they've done to make sure that those things don't happen. Because roosters definitely would not be something that cities will not permit. They're very loud. Um, but hens are another story. And, um, as in the letter that I had written, um, six chickens make about as much poop as one medium-sized dog, to be, you know, just truly honest with that. And the neat thing is, is the manure from cats and dogs, um, is very harmful to human beings. However, chicken is not. Um, so chicken, you could throw it in your vegetable garden, in your flower garden. So I really would love the opportunity to talk about these details more.
Carol, we will definitely give you the opportunity to speak at the legislative meetings, when we call it. You will be informed, and like I says, I will try to get the past legislation that we've had on those problems. Our recommendations to you.
Thank you.
Anything else you wish to speak on?
No, I could go on.
Okay, well, we don't want to go on too far. Because you only get five minutes. Okay. Anybody else, Mr. Blake?
Mr. Chairman?
Looks like Mr. Suster wants to speak.
Go, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, is the police chief still online?
Chief, are you still online?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I'm here. Yes.
Okay, uh, my name is Joe Suster. I live at eleven thousand Brunswick Avenue here in Garfield Heights. And, uh, I would like to compliment our police department. Uh, I have called them several times. They were here rapidly. And if anybody has anything bad to say about the officers in Garfield Heights, they better take a good look at it before, uh, they make their comments. And, uh, as far as, uh, Mrs. Schillerow talking about having chickens, I was on council when that ordinance came about. And there were a lot of different reasons, and I'm glad to hear that Mr. Nenadovic is going to have a meeting in regards to this because you'll probably, I'm sorry, Mrs. Schillerow, but you'll probably have more people there against having chickens in Garfield Heights than you will having them for them. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Well, Joe, I thank you for your comment.
You're welcome.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, Jen Lake has her hand raised.
Jen, you have the floor.
Hi, Jen Lake, at five, three, zero, three, east one hundred and thirty-third street, Garfield Heights, Ohio, four, four, one, two, five. And I would be interested in, um, hearing more about, uh, the chickens in the backyard. And I appreciate Carol bringing it to the floor. That's all.
Miss Lake, it will be a legislative meeting. It shall be posted. It will be in the paper. So you, everybody in the city will know when we're having that meeting. It'll be an open meeting to the public because it's a legislative meeting.
Thank you.
Okay. Jason?
Just giving it once over here.
Please.
I am not seeing anyone else with a hand raised.
Does anybody else have any comments tonight? Okay, if they're being none. I will close the comments by citizens, and we will move into the, um, election, our selection of the Ward Six Council Representative. Okay, let me read the paper. That's where I'm at. Okay. Okay. Mr. Riley, stop me if I'm doing anything wrong, as I know you will. Um, at this time, I would like to make the motion to open the floor to nominations for Ward Six Council Representative.
Chairman?
Dudley, you have the floor.
Oh, this is for the naming of a nomination?
Yes, naming the people that we're going to vote on.
Okay, I would like to nominate uh, Mr. Clifford Kelly.
Okay. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chairman?
This Dave, Councilwoman Davis?
I'd nominate Renee Bolton.
This is Renee. Bolton? Any other nominee?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Dudley.
I would nominate Frank Tagarini.
Are there any other nominations to the floor? I repeat, are there any other nominations to the floor? Okay. That being done, the nominations are closed.
What order?
Yes, please.
You need to make a motion and take a vote on closing nominations.
Thank you, Mr. Riley. Uh, I would like to make a motion at this time to close nominations. Barb, would you take the roll call, starting with me?
Nenadovic?
Nenadovic votes, yes.
Davis?
Ms. Davis?
Did you hear me? Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
On, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Six votes in favor of closing nominations. Nominations are now closed. Okay, let's see. Okay. We have three candidates for the nominations. Mr. Clifford Kelly. This is Renee Bolton and Mr. Frank Tagarini. I will label them A, B, and C, the order they were nominated in. And let's see. We will proceed with the voting. Barb, would you proceed with the voting? Starting with, starting with Councilman Dudley.
What order before you start?
Order, yes, I'm going to name.
You have to say who you're voting for.
I'm going to name the candidate, Mr. Ready. I'm, I'm dry. I'm trying to start. Okay, we'll proceed with Mr. Mr. Dudley. We're voting for Mr. Clifford Kelly. Mr. Clifford Kelly is on the floor now for the vote. You either vote yea or nay.
All right. Dudley?
Yay.
Donahue?
Nay.
Nenadovic? Davis?
Yay.
I didn't understand, yea or nay?
Yay.
No.
No, oh, okay.
I said yay, yes.
You said yay.
You said yay.
Hard to hear. Blake?
Yay.
Vaughn?
Hey.
Yay, yes.
No, he, was it yea or nay, Tom?
No.
No, okay. If at this point I would like to make it yes or no, it's a little bit easier. Barb can understand, so could I.
I can understand a lot better.
Okay, yeah, we'll do it that way, Barb. We'll go yes or no.
I don't want to give you a wrong result, you know?
I understand. So for Mr. Kelly, we have three yes votes and three no votes. It's a tie.
Yeah.
Let me get a drink of water, excuse me. Next, we will go to Mrs. Renee Bolton. Barb, would you start off with Councilman Dudley again with a yes or a no? It's a little bit easier that way.
Thank you. Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
No.
Nenadovic?
No.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
No.
Vaughn?
No.
This is Renee Bolton. There are two yes votes and four no votes. Next, we will go to Mr. Frank Tagarini. Again, yes for and no against, starting with Mr. Dudley again.
Dudley?
Uh, no.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nenadovic?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
Yes.
Only on the last candidate was four yes votes and two no votes. According to the rules we had set forth, Mr. Mr. Tagarini is the new Ward Six Council Representative. Mr. Riley, did we do that properly?
Yes.
Thank you, sir. I am going, I would like to make a motion to close voting. Barb, would you take the roll call, please?
Nenadovic?
Nenadovic votes, yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Blake?
Yes.
Vaughn?
On votes, yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. That went rather smoothly. Um, again, Mr. Riley, thank you for being here. To save any improprieties, I appreciate your input. I really do. Your word means a lot to me, Mr. Riley. And, uh, with that, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Tagarini for his new appointment to Ward Six. And at this time, I would like to inform Mr. Tagarini that he must get a hold of the mayor. Matt, you're, are you listening, Matthew? Matthew?
Yes, I was talking to Barb Byrow. I'm sorry.
That's no problem, sir. Uh, Mr. Tagarini will have to get in contact with you for the swearing-in ceremony. I would encourage him to do it as soon as possible. And, uh, sorry that we all can't be there for it, but if you could make it a Zoom where we can get in, I'd appreciate it. But I'm sure you'll give them the right ceremony, and we'll go from there.
We will do our best. We'll do our best. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate it. Okay, now we will go to Ms. Ling's comments by council. And we will start off with Mr. Dudley.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first, I'd like to congratulate and welcome Mr. Tagarini aboard as the new Councilman Award Six. Uh, second, I would let, like to let everybody know that, um, on February the twenty-fifth at six thirty, we will be having our sixteenth annual Black History Program. And you will be able to pick up the information. It will be on Facebook and all the other, um, areas like that for it to be virtual. And I would like to say that we have Clarence Bosman, who's Dr. King's driver. And, uh, he's well informed. He drove Dr. King for a couple of years, and he's a great guy to listen to. And you'll be able to get some information that you didn't always see published in books. We, so we also have him, and we're going to have Mrs. Inez Killingsworth. And she was the founder of ESOP. And like I said, if you go up on one hundred and thirty-first mile, you see this giant mirror on the wall. And that's actually her. And we remember how ESOP came into the various cities during the housing meltdown in two thousand and seven, six, seven, eight, nine, and so on. But these two individuals, like I say, Mr. Clarence Bosman, you can Google them, and there's a great story to be told. And Inez Killingsworth, Ms. Killingsworth, you Google her and you found it, and she started from the basement of her. And Inez Killingsworth, Ms. Killingsworth, you Google her and you found it, and she started from the basement of her home. It's a great story to be told there. And with that, I'd like to also be able to thank Weldon P.C. of Garfield, because we wanted to find a way to get it out to everybody. Because of COVID, we've been stuck in the house, and I think this is a good time to do it. So I really appreciate Weldon P.C. and put it together that you're gonna, even you just have Facebook, you'll be able to watch the show live. That information will be, um, put out tonight, so you can actually look on Facebook or any type of internet, and you'll be able to get that. And I believe I had to come back to my phone and give it to you, but I actually have it here. And that's one thing I wanted to take. And let me move one down. Also, there's gonna be free raffle tickets that is gonna be provided. And a raffle ticket is for a forty-plus inch television and also the gift baskets that comes from, uh, members of council and also the mayor, and all of them make a donation to this one way or another. And also the community, as well as some of the businesses. So I would like you to definitely, uh, be able to pick them tickets up. You can get them actually at Monchies on East one hundred and thirty-first. You can actually get the tickets at, uh, Weldon P.C. You can actually get it at A&amp;H on Broadway. And Open Pantry on one hundred and thirty-first. The other two stores I can't mention because they put the gap back to me. But the raffle tickets are free. Nothing is gonna cost you. Uh, we will not be having it when you come in, actually, in the prior programs, you could come in there and sit. We're gonna be holding it at the church. I'd like to thank, uh, Christian Kingdom Assembly on Broadway and Pastor, uh, Maro Johnson down there. Well, it's Minister Johnny for making it possible for them to use that, uh, church in order to hold a program because of the downsizing. And also Miss Ashley Thomas who came through here again and actually providing and setting up the flyer and working with us. But I want to say most of all, people, COVID is no joke. COVID is no joke. That's why we limited the amount of people who come in and in the church. And I didn't have, and I believe we had other members of council who went through it. You know, keep yourselves covered. Church in order, keep your hands sanitized, keep them clean, you know? If not for just yourself, but for others who come in contact with you. But we will be providing our information, and I believe it's www dot blackhistoryfourfourone two five dot com. And it's easy to remember, to blackhistoryzipcode.com. So you should have it, and that link from there will take you where you need to go. But once again, I thank the member councils and the mayor, and also the people of Bar who gives the gifts every year, because it means a lot. It allows to do this program. And this is a program that has never had to be funded by the city. It has always been funded through the contributions, and that we do appreciate it. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dudley. And, uh, I'll get in touch if they gotta call you, gotta give you a donation.
I appreciate it, Mr. Chairman, as always.
You know, you, I know you always do, Michael. Next, we will go to Mr. Donahue.
As usual, I don't have much to say. Mr. Dudley always has a lot to say. And, uh, that's why I like following him. Uh, he gives out all the information. I just give out a little bit for myself. First, I'd like to, uh, congratulate the three new police officers we have. And I'd like to congratulate the new, uh, Councilman for Ward Six, Frank Tagorini. Uh, and Michael, I do have something for you for, uh, donations. Uh, if you don't mind, I'll call you sometime and let you, before that, and let you know. It's some gift cards from McDonald's.
I appreciate the Councilman down here. We really do.
Okay, and with that, that's, that's all I have. Everybody just be safe out there and have a good evening.
Thank you, Charles. Thank you. Next, we will move on to Councilwoman Shayla Davis. Do you have anything to say, Councilwoman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to, uh, welcome the new appointed council member, Mr. Frank Tagorini. I'd also like to, uh, thank Miss Ashley Thomas and her foundation, the Seventeenth Foundation. On yesterday, we were able to provide PPE bags and equipment for fifty seniors in Ward Four. I actually got an email for two other senior residents that were not in my ward. And we were able to deliver to them from paper towels to toilet paper, masks, uh, face shields, disinfectant cleaner, hand soap, and sanitizer. Uh, we created some inspirational quotes to put in there. They got some crossword puzzles, Sudoku and word search. Just different things to, you know, let them know that we're thinking about them. It's very difficult to reach seniors and stay in touch with them, and this was a beautiful way to display, you know, some of our care and concern for those community members. Unfortunately, we couldn't do everyone because supplies are limited, but I really appreciate Ashley Thomas and the Seventeenth Foundation for putting that on with me. I'd also like to, uh, thank Jake, Jason Lucas and his funeral hall, because he allowed me to utilize the space on Sunday and bringing all the volunteers to package, um, all of the bags, and they will all deliver it yesterday evening. Thank you to all of council, um, for working together in the last couple of weeks. It's been a little tough trying to figure out these interviews and how to go about appointing someone. But I will say that on Friday night, uh, we were successful in accomplishing that goal. So thank you, Mr. Chairman, for, um, you know, taking my assistance with getting us in the breakout rooms and all of that. I'm not feeling well, so that is all that I have to say. Have a really good night, everyone, and thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Next, we will go to Councilman Blake.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll be brief. Uh, I'd like to congratulate the new officers sworn in by Mayor Burke this morning, this afternoon, and welcome to our community. Like to thank Mrs. Schiller for contacting council about the concerns that she has regarding the issue she brought up. I know there'll be some interesting conversations moving forward when we go to the Legislative Committee with that topic. Lastly, I would like to speak to the candidates who applied for the vacant Ward Six position. Each candidate brought experiences that could easily apply to the council seat. You all showed enthusiasm, professionalism, and most of all, admiration for our community. For me, it was a difficult decision because I had people grouped together, you know, very closely. I know, I know there's disappointment, but as a resident, I'm proud that such a strong and diverse group came through, came and stepped up to, to challenge to fill this position. And I would hope in the future that, you know, the people that had applied when there's a committee opening, that we look at these individuals because they brought outstanding credentials to the table. And I'd like to congratulate Mr. Tagorini on, on being named to the Ward Six position. I know your experiences will assist you greatly. And if I can be of any assistance to you or any of the, the candidates who had applied in the future, please feel free to reach out to me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Next, we go to Councilman Tom Vaughn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'm gonna start on a very sad note. Today in this country, we reached five hundred thousand deaths from this COVID crisis that we've been living for with the past year. I beg everybody, please sign up, get on the list, get your shot. Might be uncomfortable for a day or two, but go through the process. It's very important if we want to return to any type of normal, normalcy. We need to get these shots, and we need to do it. So please, I know some people are on the fence about this, but please, get your shot. I'd like to thank the Service Department for a great job the past couple of weeks. Getting out there, getting the snow removed, getting things cleaned up. And Mark, I really like the way we're slaying the salt. You know, previous years, we always worried about whether or not we have enough to go through. We did that, uh, only at the intersection salting. It's great help. It's really helping, and I thank all of your guys, you know, yourself included, uh, Mr. Burke out, out also plowing. I, I really appreciate it. I'd like to welcome the new police officers. It's great to have you aboard, as well as the new dispatchers. I wish you luck. I wish you prayers and, uh, welcome to our community. I want to congratulate Mr. Frank Tagorini. Frank, you've got some big shoes to fill there, and Mr. Burke. But let me tell you, I don't think there's a person on this council, if you need help with anything, please reach out. We're here to help. You know, one of the questions that came up in this was, is, was there a learning manual or any handouts? Learn as you go, my friend. So we're here to help you, so don't feel that you're an island by yourself. That is about all I have for tonight. And, oh, I'd like to thank everybody that did come out for these. Some great people. Everybody had talent and was willing to share with this community. And I hope we can find ways in which you can get involved in this community and share those talents. Mr. Chairman?
Um, I haven't spoken, spoken yet.
Oh, okay, good, go. I was going back to you.
Do that right after I speak. Okay, um, Mayor, I thank you for your comments tonight. I think everything went well. I do get a lot of questions. How's the new mayor doing? I think he's doing a great job. I think you, you, these past three weeks, you've accomplished a lot. And I feel there has been no gap in the leadership this city had. I feel no gap. Uh, the transition was wonderful. I don't know how you're doing, but as far as the public goes, they see no difference. They just know there's a different name there, but the transition is beautiful, and I believe you're doing a great job.
Thanks, Mike.
Yes.
I said, thank you.
You're very welcome.
The hair is getting grayer every day, but, you know, I can't control that, so.
After a while, after a while, you lose it.
Been a lot of long hours every day, let me tell you.
You're doing great, Matt. So, um, we will schedule a legislative meeting. I will get a hold of Carol and, or get in touch with Carol and let her know the legislation. I will get that. Sometime this week, I will print it up, and we'll go from there. I will contact you. How we can meet to pick it up and exchange it, and we'll go, I'll, I'll get that, and I will schedule the meeting. I will get with Barb for that. I want to thank Shayla Davis for the work she's done on the, uh, interviews. Those were three wonderful days. She handled the, uh, the Zoom calls rather well. We did have some glitches, but the glitches gave us a learning opportunity. And I think we went through it well. I want to thank Jason for all the work he did in those interviews, too. Keeping track of the hands raised, keeping track of who was at the meeting, admitting them, going out of the room and having Sam sign back in about nine times. But, uh, I appreciated that, Jason, I really did. Uh, I think we worked well as a committee. Um, I would like to thank, um, the candidates that came. They gave us their best. Um, I would like to have seen a little bit more about their, the candidate themselves. I appreciate all their family involvement in the city. That's part of being part of Garfield Heights family involvement, and I think that's coming back. I, we had a time there where, uh, people just didn't want to get involved. And, uh, Mr. Burke now has five candidates. Um, I hope somebody else signs up so we can get this, um, very underway and get it moving and get the city, uh, in the right direction and complying with the, uh, with the law. Uh, welcome to the three new police officers. I know the chief's gonna give you the best guidance, and I know the men are gonna accept you, uh, rather well. We need you. I'm glad about the, uh, coming in and the diversity of the group. I think it's about time we got to that point, and that's what the committee that the mayor is forming is about. Um, Mr. Tagorini, I'd like to congratulate you. Welcome to the committee and, uh, or the council. And, uh, I know you'll have a lot to say, and, uh, I know you'll have a lot of positive input. At least I'm hoping it's positive. I'd like to thank Mr. Gary Wolfsky, as Tom Vaughn said, for getting this legislation through the FOP, uh, our first line defense. Like I told the, told Mr. Wolfsky, you're there before, before the, uh, ambulance. You're, you're, you're dealing with this and traffic stops. So we gotta protect our officers, and we have to do it whatever we can to get them there. Mr. Vaughn always says it well, because he's our safety chairman, and he takes care of the police. And he alerts me to what they, what their responsibilities are and what they need, and I thank Mr. Vaughn for that. Um, and last but not least, I'd like to thank the Service Department. Mark, you guys did a great job. You put down the salt. It's all in my van right now, but, uh, you did put it down. And, uh, the streets were clear. We always have somebody that complains, but you know what? If, if we went around and melted all the snow, they'd say, what are you doing with the water? So you can never please everybody. But I do have to caution you on one thing, Mark. We do not salt the ice rink, so. And with that, I'd like to thank everybody for the council meeting tonight, and I will refer to my colleague in Ward Seven to make his announcement.
Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Vaughn.
I would like to make a motion that we adjourn at this time.
A motion by Mr. Vaughn to adjourn. Barb, will you take the roll call, starting with Mr. Vaughn?
Excuse me, do we need a second?
I'll get a second. Chuck Donahue.
Chuck Donahue, okay, Mr. Vaughn.
Okay, thank you. Vaughn?
Vaughn votes yes.
Dudley?
Yes.
Donahue?
Yes.
Nanadovich?
Nanadovich votes yes.
Davis? Blake?
Yes.